I'm Pastor Rich Iverson of Bethel Lutheran Church for this evening's invocation.
Thank you. Lord, thank you for the gift of life that you give to us. Thank you that you give us callings to serve you in many ways. Thank you for the calling that you give to these men and women to serve you in public service. Lord, we ask you grant to them wisdom, help them in the choices that they make to cause our city and community to prosper in all ways, Lord, financially and relationally and with just and fair decisions that are made. Help them, Lord, it's hard. They have faced many hard things where there doesn't seem to be maybe a good choice, but sometimes a choice between two difficult things. So I pray that you grant them wisdom, help them, their decisions, help us as citizens to support and follow our leaders. Thank you for the place you've planted us here in this town. We thank you for our community. Thank you for the gift that you give to us one another. So I pray for your assistance, for your help. Give us humility and patience and wisdom, Lord, as we serve you in our callings and vocations. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this August 1st, 2016, City Council Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections? Anthony?
Would it be possible to have City Engineer just give a brief update on the roads? Like, for example, Alcott sort of has come to a grinding halt.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Another item, Your Honor.
Run.
New business. I just want to put 512 West Stanton onto our attention, and I know we'll probably talk about it in Public Works, but it's a house that needs immediate attention. 512 West Stanton.
And comments on streets would be best to come where?
I think we can put both under new business.
Okay. Very good. Someone move to approve the agenda.
I'll move, Your Honor. Just a second.
Second. Anthony, call the favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you. There are no public hearings. Under bids, we, first item would be a resolution awarding the bid for Public Improvement 8214, the water main replacement project improvement number one. Brian Yvaro.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, members. On Friday, July 29th, I received two quotes for Public Improvement 8214, Water Main Replacement Improvement Project. Included there, we had received two quotes. The engineer's estimate was $28,000. The low quote received was just slightly under that amount. Therefore, with that construction amount, I estimated a total project cost of approximately $33,900 to complete this project. It's slated that this work could begin very soon and be completed here within the next month. Therefore, I'm requesting a Ward of Construction Service contract to Delzer Construction in the amount of $27,869.
Could someone offer that?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Jim, thank you. Second.
I'll second him.
Anthony, any questions, comments?
One question, I missed it. Where is this?
This area is a new TIF area. It's generally located on the northeast quadrant of Otter Tail Drive and Tower Road. It's Phase 1 in one apartment. It's an upsizing from four inch to a six inch, our standard.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two under bids, we'll need a resolution awarding the bid for Public Improvement 5296, the Minnesota Avenue Street Improvement Project to Stephen L. Johnson Excavation in the amount of $193,245.50. And I'll call on Engineer Dan Edwards.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the memo in front of you, I think we've laid out the process that has been completed at the last council meeting. The final cost hearing was held for the project. Council approved that. Since that time, we've sent mail notices out to all the property owners regarding the council's action because at that meeting we also reduced driveway costs for some residents, so they all have the actual approved amount in their hands. At that time, as noted in here, there was a number of written objections that were filed in accordance to the notice that we sent out with our mailed special assessment notice. For the individuals, we had three that appeared that they would meet the requirements and those we mentioned. The issue coming up now is there's a potential 30-day appeal period in which any of the property owners that filed a written notice could notify the city of their intent for a district court appeal of the special assessment amount. That appeal can only affect those that have filed the proper written notice, so it's not dealing with all the properties on the project. The issue we have, as you could expect, is that if there's a 30-day period for the notice, there would be an extended period after that for the court to either review or even act on it, which we're concerned would take us entirely out of the construction season and we would lose the opportunity to use the excellent bid that we have from Johnson Excavation. Therefore, in reviewing it with staff, we're recommending that the council go ahead, award a contract to Stephen Johnson Excavation for this project so that we can move forward and have the work actually start and take place yet this fall.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from the council?
I'll offer it. I'll start it off.
Thank you. Second. Spin. Second. Any questions, any concerns? Then we'll have a roll call.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Picks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Shire.
The resolution is approved, and you've done exceptional work on this project. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Just a quick credit here. Your city staff and your assistants and stuff have just done a tremendous job on this under some very adverse conditions, and they followed the statute to the letter, and I would certainly expect no problems when you really, your attorney will have to advise you, of course, but he, you know, it's just ridiculous. I mean, they can't get, the most they do is say you have to reassess the values, and that's final. The law says this is the only recourse you have, so I wouldn't get overly excited about that. But we really want to, the seven people up there really want to extend a thank you to your staff and the professional manners in which they've proceeded. Never heard a bad word out of them, and there should have been probably some along the way. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you just give us your name and address?
I'm sorry, you're so off.
We appreciate a pat on the back. There are no petitions or communications. Under the open forum, this evening, we have a petition from Ted Steenbach concerning 2817 Bayview Heights Road regarding the noise law enforcement speed limits on County Road 1, and I'll call on Ted.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to congratulate our police force on a recent, whatever they had going on. They didn't publicize it enough, so most of us didn't know about it until we heard it on Channel 6 at night. So, with that, first thing up is, I found out we have a noise law, and it says, I don't know, Lynn, did you take, you know, I sent pictures?
Everything you said was for me.
Okay, so everybody should have a picture of that sign out by Connell Drive and 111. And I wasn't under the impression we didn't have a noise law. I worked with our police chief to do speed and stuff, but I wasn't, you know, informed that we had a noise law, and that sign says noise law enforced. Well, the problem we have at Bayview Heights is right out from my patio is the city limit sign, and that's the 50 mile an hour zone. So at 5:30 in the morning, or 5 o'clock, or whenever, semis come in there, they use their engine brakes, brake brakes, if you know what they are. They're very loud. They open up exhaust ports to slow down their truck instead of using their brakes, and they're very noisy. It's enough to shake the house. So, I've lived there 24 years, and it hasn't changed a hell of a lot. It's just the same way it's always been. So I'm just wondering, why can't we do something about that? We have, like, I don't know if it's a pass or what you call it, for Harley-Davidsons I have a motorcycle, and it's noisy, but it's nothing like these guys with Harleys can make their machines rap off downtown. Sometimes you can't talk, you gotta wait till they pass by. So I'm just wondering if we can enforce our noise laws, especially the engine brakes. The signs are so darn little, that sign is probably, I don't know, 12 by 15? Maybe we gotta make them bigger and put no engine brakes allowed or something on it. It's just not getting the job done. We don't have any of those signs out by us that I know of. I saw one out there at Connell Drive and 111. I don't know if any...
Have you guys seen any of these signs?
Yeah, there's one on 210 as you come in.
Where is that?
210. On 210 as you come into town.
Really? Okay. Well, we've got so many signs going up the hill, going out to Bayview Heights that, you know, the other night we went, the wife and I was going out at night, and I said, holy bitches, just look, these signs aren't 100 feet apart, you know? So evidently, we need a bigger sign or whatever, but all we ask for is a little enforcement. I don't know. I hate to get out there with the 12-gauge, because the last day I got out there with a 12-gauge, I got a ticket from the city police for shooting a squirrel, and I thought it was safer than a 22. That's why I used a 12-gauge. But anyway, the second thing I bring up is the speed limit out there. I brought this up once before, and our county engineer said, when I approached him and said, "Well, Carlisle's even got only 40 miles an hour." He said, "Well, nobody slows down for that." So that was not a good answer for me, anyway. Oh, and by the way, when, in '92 and '93, something back then, one of our neighbors approached the city police at that time about the noise out there, and especially Harley-Davidsons, and he said, "Well, we don't want to be an unfriendly city. The heck with the people that live here. We don't want to be an unfriendly city." So they didn't, it was like, "We're not going to enforce it, because then we'll be a mean city." So, but that was, that came from a sergeant in the police force back in the '92, '93. He said, "We don't want to be focused as an unfriendly city." So, but then the speed limit thing, in 2011, we had a study by the Assistant County Engineer. Now, is he here?
Is this a county road, or is it a city road?
County.
Because I appreciate, obviously, you know, but I thought you're only allowed so long to present, and if it's a county road, then I think, you know, Tuesday tomorrow would be a better day to go and talk to the county about this.
But we don't have the jurisdiction of a county or a city. They told us that the state sets that speed limit out there.
Yep. So... But I think if it's a county jurisdiction road, we can't change the speed.
But from the center of the road to our property, that's got to be city, because we're paying taxes to the city, not to the county.
You pay taxes to the county, believe me.
Somewhat, but...
No, you pay taxes to the county. More than you did to the city.
Who's ditch is it?
I would say it's probably a county ditch, is it, Brian? It's a county ditch.
Because I've lived there 24 years. I mowed that ditch for 24 years.
And the county appreciates that.
And I'm going to send them a bill. Takes at least an hour with a 60-inch mower, and the city could just as well keep coming a little further out, you know? They mow the rest of the ditches out that way, but they don't, they stop there. So I kind of wonder.
Ted, can we view this as a complex sort of issue that certainly can't be fixed or addressed tonight, but being we are dealing with a dual jurisdiction situation on both speed and on signage and everything else, give our engineers and our law enforcement agency the opportunity to address both of these issues as you presented them? We do have studies, as you mentioned, from previously, and we have to find out how that applies to today and how we best address the concerns that you're bringing forward.
But this does concern me. We are being charged for storm feed. You're aware of that. We don't have curb and gutter. There's 349 people out there that don't have curb and gutter.
Does that address what we're talking about previously? We can't, we can't pile...
Oh, okay.
Issues on top of issues.
I didn't know how many of these things I should list.
We can only deal with the traffic at this juncture, please.
But starting tomorrow, I will be listing them, because I will be filing for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Your Honor, I checked into this with Senator Ingberdson on MINDOT. MINDOT has final say on setting those regulations, and so we go through the county, the processes go, the city asks the county, the county goes to MINDOT, and the legislature recently has given MINDOT full control of those decisions, as I understand it. So you can voice your objection to, to, you know, your representatives, Nornas and Ingberdson, but we really can't deal with it? It just isn't possible.
Look, that's kind of bureaucratic. I mean, we're talking, the city can't do their own decisions.
Well, it is what it is.
Well, let us look at it and give it adequate consideration and get back to you. Thank you.
Your Honor, could I ask a question on the noise ordinance? Is there, do we have any signs posted for closer to town that no Jake or no engine brakes?
There's one out on the interstate as you come off the apron to go into Highway 210. Comes by Walmart, and you hear it every time a big semi comes in.
But it doesn't say engine brakes, so the naive people don't know what noise laws are, especially trickers.
Can you send out a map of locations that we've posted signs?
But I would suggest larger signs.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have another open forum request from George Mike Rayfeld. Would you present your issue, please?
Your Honor, gentlemen? Four years ago, Country Manor Mobile Home Park was sold by Gary Gordon. Bruce Dowell from California bought it. Gary suggested to Bruce that, since I'm the biggest pain in his butt, that I'd be the perfect manager for the park. So I've taken this on because I like the park. But we've had, we got farmland on the outer outskirts of the park that runs down 59, I'll call it 59, right across from the cemetery. And then we have, you know, from the outskirts of the park, we have some more field, and then east of that, right across from the golf course, that's where we're located. We got a violation stating that the field that's by the highway needs to be mowed. I mowed it last year, and then we curtilled it. Now, these pictures and stuff, I'd like you to pass in. I have thousands of flowers, yellow flowers. It looks beautiful. We've knocked it all off and blocked it off, and then we cut from that area all the way to the highway and all the way around by the wellhouse, the old wellhouse, and it makes it look really nice. My wife suggested that we do this, you know? I'm trying to farm it out, but I can't because the church that's behind us, that's right out on the city limits, they still have this one farmer does their little area. And so I can't get no farmers to do our areas, because it's really not worth their time. Or they have to go down Pebble Shores Lane to bring their big equipment in to do the other parts. And we have around roughly 12 and a half acres. But this little section by the highway is in violation of tall grass and weeds. It's a nature area. We turned it into a nature area this year because I couldn't get a farmer to do it. So I took pictures to show that we have it all blocked off, looks beautiful. I have thousands and thousands of bees, which we have problems with the bee population right now. And the reason I got this idea is because they had in the paper, the newspaper, of farmers blocking off little sections in their fields to do a wildlife thing, to bring the population up, the butterflies, marnocks, you know what I mean, and bumblebees. And so I'd like to keep it. This, you know, and then next year, I'd like to try to get a farmer to, you know, hopefully maybe, you know, I don't wish this, but you know, you never know, Dave could die and then not do that farmland, you know, by the church, and then, you know, we can get that all farmed. But as of right now, I just took these pictures today, this morning, 9:30, and that's what it looks like right now. And I think it would be wrong to cut it down, because, I mean, it looks beautiful. It's all blocked off, you know, there's, we sprayed it with curtil. I know there was pigweed in it last year and a whole bunch of other crap, excuse my language, but now it's just thousands and thousands of yellow flowers. And that would be wrong to cut it down because of the bees and the butterflies. So there's my story.
Sir, did you get a notice from the city?
Yeah, I got it right here. And then I went and talked to her. I've talked to him, that gentleman right there, last year. And, you know, so we worked on it last year, and we did cut it down, and then we sprayed it and stuff. This year, this is what come up after we sprayed it, you know, in the early spring with curtil. And I really don't have a lot of equipment. I have a mower, 60-inch deck, and it's really roughing. And, you know, my back's old, and I go to the doctor, Randy, to get a couple injections tomorrow, which is good. But, you know, this is why we did it like this this year, is to make it for butterflies and bees and, you know, pollinate and all that other good nature corrupt, you know, stuff. So there's my story.
Gordon?
You recently had an update on your new ordinance, and you'll be talking about that in the near future. I think that this is something that could be...
Is that on the 10th?
I believe that's where it was going to go.
Okay.
So I think you could probably handle some of this at that time.
Make that an agenda item.
We'll keep these here for... Yes, sir. I made them for you guys.
Thank you.
Also, see, what's really bad, too, is right across the street from the American Legion, there is a house, and then it got flooded out, so they tore that house down. Now there's weeds, and it looks like, looks bad, but here, this is all blocked off and all cut out, and it just looks nice. But here, I talked to that lady, I can't remember her name. She says that that, just that little block area is not in the city limits.
That's right.
But really, it is, because it's right across, and the house right next to it's in the city limits, and the house, or in the property right next to that's in the city limits. So how can you have a little block and say that that's okay to have weeds this tall and look like crap with a beautiful, you know, slough or lake, whatever that is, you know, 10,000 lakes, 20,000 sloughs, you know? You know, I believe that we should mow that, that the city should mow that, just to make it look beautiful. We can make that into a small little park, you know?
Thank you. We will consider your comments and your concerns, and we will get a response back to you.
I appreciate your time, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Under the consent agenda, the following are non-controversial items intended to be approved as one motion without discussion. If a council member, staffer, or member of the public would like to discuss an item, please ask it be removed and it will be placed elsewhere on the agenda. Item one, resolution to accept the donation in the amount of $4,716 from Bimbo Bakery for playground equipment at Roseville Park. Item two, resolution to schedule a partial street right-of-way vacation hearing for September 6, 2016. Item three, a motion to approve minutes from the July 18, 2016 City Council Meeting. Item four, a motion to approve licenses, and you have an updated copy in your packet. I will entertain a resolution to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Anthony, thank you.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes. Fish. Epstein.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Picks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Shire.
Resolution is approved. The consent agenda is approved. Under I, ordinances and resolutions, item one, a second reading of Ordinance 46-7 Series, rezoning of a parcel of property located on the Kirk Bright Edition from RA to R1. Gordon, are you commenting on that any further?
Yeah, just that this is that area along Park Street that is an open field. You've seen some parking activity there during Summerfest in the past. It's, the plan is for the, with this rezoning is 34 single-family lots.
And we need a, simply a roll call. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Picks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Shire.
The resolution is approved. Thank you. Item two, a resolution of support regarding a Department of Employment and Economic Development Job Creation Fund application, and we'll call on Amy Bolton.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Before you this evening is a resolution of support for an application to the state of Minnesota's Department of Employment and Economic Development Job Creation Fund Program. That program provides job creation awards and capital investment rebates to assist with the creation of high-paying jobs and to support... with the creation of high-paying jobs and to support business expansion in the state of Minnesota. As I mentioned, the resolution is required as part of the application process for the local jurisdiction to acknowledge that they support the project and the application on behalf of the business. The company that we are referring to this evening that would be making the application is Ara Fabricators, and they are an ornamental and architectural metalwork manufacturer that's currently located in rural Dalton. They do not have the space to expand at that location, and just to be clear, they do intend to remain at that location, and the Fergus Falls project would be an expansion for them. I just want to make sure that that's clear to everybody that this would not be a full relocation of that company, just an expansion that would be taking place as part of the Fergus Falls project. And that project itself would be about over twenty-eight thousand square foot office and manufacturing facility to be built on land currently owned by the Port Authority and Wyron's Road. And the total project itself would be over three point seven million dollars for that project, including the property acquisition, site improvements, construction costs, as well as the purchase of machinery and equipment. Ara is committing to create fourteen new jobs with this project and at the new facility, and those jobs would have an average cash wage of around twenty dollars per hour. The next step in this process would be to submit a completed application to the state. They would review that application based on the program requirements and then, as anticipated, they would formally designate the business as a job creation fund business. And they could start creating, counting the jobs that are being created and the investments to count towards that potential rebate. Funding is provided directly to the company itself based on performance, and so when jobs are created and investment is made and documented to deed, that funding is provided directly to the company. So it's simply a resolution of support needed from the city to support that application to the state on behalf of the company. Jasmine Sonmore from the company is here this evening and would be happy to answer any questions if there's anything additional that I haven't addressed.
Can I ask a question, Your Honor? Is this similar into like the Jobs Z?
This program...
Take, take the place of Jobs Z?
Correct, yeah. Jobs Z was a program previously available through the state that has sunsetted, and this program was established about two years ago through the state of Minnesota in replacement, somewhat in replacement, and it is a statewide program versus Jobs Z, which was just Greater Minnesota. So that's one distinction.
This is our first, this is our first...
This is the first application. There is a base requirement, which makes it somewhat challenging for some of our companies to qualify as they're growing, of creating ten new jobs as a base requirement and within a two-year period. So that's a pretty aggressive hiring for some companies because of our challenges in workforce availability today.
Sure. Thank you.
So tonight, we simply need a resolution of support.
I'll draft that resolution, Your Honor.
And thank you.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Darren, thank you. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Emerson.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Eppert.
Shire.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Thank you. Item three, resolution authorizing the city administrator to draft a letter to be signed and submitted by the mayor on behalf of the city regarding the Regional Treatment Center National Registration. Andrew Bremseth, go ahead, address that.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. As you recall, on July eighteenth, we held a work session discussing the proposed expanded designation of the national registry for the RTC campus. And at the conclusion of that work session, staff was directed to contact Jeff Schlossman, Campus Development Group, SHPO, and also Colliers International to get feedback as to where they stand or how they feel about the proposed designation. So tonight, we'd just like to report on how those conversations went and then are looking for direction from the council as to how we should proceed with the letter, or maybe not the letter, to SHPO for the hearing that's going to be held August sixteenth. Beginning with Schlossman's, obviously, the city council received correspondence from him within the last couple days indicating that he is strongly in support of this designation moving forward. He's the one who proposed the designation and has remained committed to that. I did ask him in my initial correspondence if they would consider withdrawing the application or delaying the application based on the questions that the council had at the work session, and his response to that was they need to move forward to make the project that they're working on financially feasible. So they are, they are continuing to push forward and will be offering letters or words of support to SHPO to use at that public hearing. The second conversation was with SHPO, which I extensively highlighted here within the memo in the packet. And basically, what we learned from SHPO was that the city will have the, the city's opinion or the position we take will be noted on the record at the hearing, but ultimately cannot stop this designation from moving forward. With that being said, I asked SHPO, when I was conversing with him and the mayor, and Kyle joined me on a conference call as well, if the designation was likely to move forward, even if the city objected and they said that, yes, in fact, it is going to move forward regardless. And then also, they, they mentioned that the RTC designation needs to be viewed as a whole. I know we had some discussions about whether or not the Schlossman development could have a standalone designation, and SHPO was quick to say that they would not support that, that this has to be viewed as a campus designation, and that this property is a large property that can sustain several nicks and changes due to its size and complexity, but there are some things that could happen that would negate the registry for the property, and that would obviously be changes to the main horseshoe structure being the most important part of the campus designation. I don't know if you want to add anything in regards to our conversations with SHPO, otherwise I'll shift gears to Colliers.
Go ahead.
Okay. And then I just spoke with Dan Peterson of Colliers just before the meeting and asked his take on what this designation would mean based on the fact that we're already currently marketing the property under the existing designation. And I quote him when I say, he doesn't see value in the expansion for the city but can see the value from the applicant. He would say that this puts more layers of complexity for any developer trying to figure out what to do with the horseshoe complex that we're currently marketing. And then, like he said, the Colliers' position would be that introducing this would bring another party to be involved in the conversation at the table for any potential redevelopment. So they were, they were not seeing the value in, in this proposed designation for their process or from what the city is trying to do currently. So with that being said, that's the correspondence we've had over the last two weeks with the parties, and I would stand by for any questions.
Your Honor.
Ben?
Andrew, could you just explain that a little further? I, I'm not understanding maybe Colliers' position. If a developer were to come in and take on the horseshoe, how does that add, how does, because that's the only property that, that SHPO is saying is, has to remain, remain in order to remain, to keep the historic designation, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So they don't have to ask any other developer permission to do anything on their property?
Well, Colliers also mentioned the county building. If this goes forward, they need, they said the county didn't need to be at the table. But basically, the way it impacts the process they're working on is that by moving forward with this, it eliminates all flexibility in regards to the horseshoe. The way he stated it is if they found a user right now that did not intend to use the tax credits and it was under the current designation, they could come in and approach the city about renovating any of it or demolishing any parts they aren't going to use, whereas if this goes forward, then when those conversations take place, the Schlossman parties will have to be at the table because they need to know that some of the actions that any potential developer may take could impact what they're doing. I don't know, is that clear or I can...
Yeah.
But the cemetery is considered a part of the historic designation as well as the lawn or government center building and so on. Everything up there is considered part of the campus. And the Kirkbright Building itself is considered one building and therefore has extra significance in that regard. But in order to qualify for historic tax credits, which Mr. Schlossman is trying to do, and I would assume just about every other developer who might come forward will be doing, it has to be part of the historic registry.
In your response to that, I mean, the difficult thing for me, I think SHPO is putting the city in kind of a tough spot, quite honestly, because I want to support Schlossman's application to, for historic tax credits, because that does benefit the city. I mean, if he's going to use tax credits to redevelop more buildings, then we, I think we should, need to support that. The problem is if it's adding another layer of complexity, that puts us in a tough spot.
Your Honor. Anthony?
Obviously, does that include this piece of land that we've just...
Not that I, no. I don't, I don't find that piece in the list.
Right. Because wouldn't, wouldn't that piece of land...
Well, it could have been, it wasn't...
Be, be included? If you're going, if you're talking about the campus, I, I mean, my feeling is, we engaged Colliers in the beginning, we, we obviously had a lot of debate about process. We're going down a process. I would like to see the results of Colliers and if there's before adding another layer of complexity to what's already going to be a complex decision to be made. And, and obviously, Dan Peterson is saying, you know, he doesn't see value to the city. It's more layers of complexity, and yeah, it's another party to the table. And we didn't sell the property to Schlossman on the basis that, you know, we were giving him tax, tax credits. And obviously, I, I understand, I'm like Ben, I fully support Jeff's project going forward, but I don't think the timing is right for us to make this decision until we know the results of the, of the Colliers. You know, we spent twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars on Colliers, and SHPO has done nothing for us other than be objectionable. I think if we're doing anything, we should leverage that to our advantage as well as theirs, as, as well as the Jeff's. So I, I don't, I just, I think we need more information, or we shouldn't make a decision until we know what decisions are before us.
They will go ahead and act anyway.
Subway, I mean, that's, that's, that's their prerogative.
Your Honor?
Kent, Andrew, have a question. From what you said, my understanding is, letters went out to four of us on this, right? And if we all say, no, we don't want it, that doesn't make any difference, they're going to do it anyway? Is that, is that correct?
Partially correct, but they differentiate between public landowners and private landowners. And what SHPO was telling us is that if the private property owner, being Schlossman, objected, it would stop, but the public landowners can object to it, but that doesn't have any effect on the property. And I raise the question...
I think they're way out of bounds.
I don't disagree. I raise the question what the difference is between public property rights and private property rights, and, and they indicated that citizens have the right to want to save buildings that are on public property. That was the response to that. So I, I, I agree with you that, I don't see the difference between public property rights and private property rights, property rights or property rights.
So, just to follow up on that, if I may, Your Honor. So that's what was my question from the, the work session. It sounded like out of the four members, three, you know, a majority have to be in favor. It sounds like, doesn't matter what, what we decide, we don't have a decision in this. So I don't really know.
Why didn't we ever get a letter?
What we do run forward.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Doesn't matter. I agree with that, and I think that the solution from my standpoint is to go back to what we're doing with the property. We are seeking to market this property through Colliers, and that's our role. The other roles that have been expressed, Ottertail County has expressed on taking a non-support position. Colliers has said it's not in our interest. We know that it's in Jeff Schlossman's interest, both monetarily and long-term, to have someone else do the tax credit, which I'm glad, I'm happy for, that I, we support that. But because SHPO has said, it doesn't matter to them what we decide, I believe we should take a non-position so that leaves the door open for us if we have a developer that wants to do something, then we can at least take some action. But otherwise, if we take a position in favor of it...
Or against it.
Or against it, we're stuck. So let's leave the door open. If it doesn't matter, let's just take a non, let's just wait and see. That's my suggestion to the council.
Last week, I started the week by calling Michael Coop, whom you've all heard from and, and met and so on, from SHPO. He's a longstanding member, official of SHPO and has been our most consistent sounding board and, and authority on preservation and so on. I, I wanted to ask him several questions, which we've now talked a little bit about and so on, and I, I wasn't able to get a, get to him before he left the country, actually, and he's still, still gone. But anyway, he sent a voicemail back that said, appreciate your questions and so on. And I do want to say that, for one thing, your project has, is going forward very well with Stantec. And they are representing what it is you're trying to accomplish in the way of redevelopment and preservation and stability and demolition and so on. And we consider it to be an excellent project in the works. If you have other questions, please contact Sarah Blamers in our office as well and continue to ask your questions, which I did. And I asked her about the very questions that you had, whether we respond or not respond favorably or unfavorably to the, the historic registry going forward and so on, and who, who has influence on what's going to happen and not and so on, which we've already discussed here and so on, and a number of other questions. And anyway, we then had a conversation, the chief and Andrew and I, with Gordon, no, Dennis...
You said Gardner.
Gardner, Dennis Gardner, and Natasha Weiner, and other two officials of SHPO and so on, to get more information, more definitive information and so on, which we did, and they verified the very questions we've discussed tonight. And I called Nata, Sarah back and said that we had a very good discussion. Thank you for setting up the conference call with the other two and so on. And she sent an email back to me, which you have a copy of. And please bear with me. I'm glad to hear that it went well. I'm not sure if Natasha mentioned to you that she and I had a meeting here last week with Michael Coop of our staff, as well as Todd Grover from McDonald, from McDonald, Mac Architects, to review the proposed scope of work for the bond-funded mothballing and partial demolition of non-contributing, contributing elements. This meeting also went very well, and I would like you to know that we will make every attempt to coordinate this work with the city staff and consultants, Stantec and McDonald and Mac, to review and finalize the scope, taking into consideration both the appropriate rehabilitation of the historic property and the timing constraint the city has in spending this money before the end of calendar year two thousand sixteen sunset date. We talked about all of this with Todd Grover, and I believe we are all in agreement that there is a path forward with transparency and positive collaboration effort on all of our parts. We can make this a successful preservation project for the Kirkbright. So your conversation about not commenting is probably the very best one that we can use going forward, because it leaves the door open for us and it gives them the assurance that we're not opposing it at least. That's my comment.
I, I would agree with that, Your Honor. And I don't, do we just not make a motion? Do we make a motion to not comment, or do we just not make a motion?
Well, I mean, it's, you can just simply not make a motion if that's what you want to do, is not have any position letter provided. My only two bits on this thing is that they should understand and should know that we're trying to market this to someone else, that this is not necessarily a property that is going to be held in the coffers of the city, nor was it intended to be held in the coffers has always been to get it into private ownership. And so personally, I think that it makes sense why, why they have to have a decision now on this matter, just seems to really make it difficult to put the city in a difficult situation, because this is really a decision that a private property owner, who ultimately ends up with the redevelopment and ends up with the Kirkright, they should have some say on this matter. But they're wanting to move forward. And, and so we, we aren't in a position to allow that person an opportunity for say in this matter, so.
Your Honor, if I may, I just, you know, I don't disagree with anything we talked about, but to Mr. Shire's point, what was your take, Andrew, with Mr. Schlossman, as far as, I mean, I don't want to be viewed as we're not supportive of his project. I mean, that's going to benefit the city, it's going to, it's going to help him. So, my only concern in taking a non-position would be, you know, the, the recourse he'd feel that the city is not supportive of his, his work up there.
The response that you guys saw from Mr. Schlossman is the only correspondence I received from him, but I was repeatedly using language to suggest that we do support the development that he's doing, in my correspondence.
Thanks.
Your Honor, I have one question. Is there a window that closes for CDG?
Sixteenth.
If they don't, and that's the drop dead date. They have no-
That's a hearing.
Opportunity for-
That's, that's a hearing.
They have no opportunity going forward.
They will take comments afterwards, but they'll just be forwarded to the historic registry.
Your Honor, I, I have a motion here that is a motion that we, we resolved to remain neutral at this point, listing those very reasons that we have listed. So, it affirms campus development, Schlossman, that we support them. It affirms that, you know, the Ottertail County has a building there that now, you know, that affects, it's another layer. It affirms that Colliers is seeking to develop something, that we're not sure about the outcome based on this. And it also affirms that SHIPO has stated it doesn't matter what opinion the city offers. Therefore, we resolve to remain neutral at this point. There's many parties, the city represents actually many of the, we work with those parties and represent some of them. So, I think, you know, if we want to have, as our attorney has said, a statement of neutrality at this point, we can adopt a motion to that extent. And I, to me, it doesn't matter one way or the other, but to address your concern, this states that we support the development of Schlossman, but also support the other entities that are trying to work with development. We don't know what they are yet. So, we have to consider all the players here, not just one.
If that's a motion, I would second it. And the reason, I think you're right, I think we're in a tough spot, we just have to do the best we can, remain neutral, and we don't have much of a choice in this, I don't think, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
With, with that motion, would you want us to write a letter that states that we're neutral, or to send the minutes from this meeting and the discussion, or do you want to just not have any further correspondence with SHIPO?
Nothing.
No further correspondence, just at least, please.
You simply don't have to respond at all.
No.
For the sake of the city and these players, now we've said we support this, we, you know, we agree with the positions, but we can't make a statement.
But I think, Your Honor, I think, you know, our attorney makes a good point, is the fact that we're tying the hands of the, of a future developer for the Kirkright. And that's something we have to, you know, remember.
I just, I disagree with Anthony, we have, we're tying the hands, and I just, I'm totally against this. We've dealt with Schlossman for many years, he's never once asked about this until now. And I don't understand why that is, or what's going on. I think there's other people pushing for this, for some reason, but we've never, he's, he's had opportunities for the historic tax credit, he never, he said he didn't want them. He was going to just do what he's going to do, and all of a sudden, now he wants them. So, I'm not, not sure what's going on. But what Andrew said is, the public has a right to preserve the public buildings? Is that what you, is that what you said? We don't have, they have the, the private is private, but the public has a right to have a say in public buildings? Is that what you said?
That was a position that SHIPO took, yes.
We represent the large, the whole town. So, I don't get what, I mean, they say one thing, and then it just, it's just, they use a lot of words and don't say a lot, so.
And don't give us any money to help with that.
And I want to just make, no, I want to say what Rod says, no letter to them, no nothing, just leave it alone.
You can just choose to not respond.
Yeah. We do a lot of work, but jurisdiction is not necessarily in our, our bag, no.
Do we need any kind of motion?
It already has been.
We have a motion, and perhaps, just for purposes of, of, just for procedure, the motion was to draft a letter of neutrality. If you wish to have a letter drafted of neutrality, then you should vote in favor. If you wish for that to die, then you should vote against. And whether or not a further motion is provided after, and if that motion is defeated, the matter can just move on with. So, it's really what, what you guys want, you want a letter or not.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, Ben.
If we have this motion of neutrality, basically, it's just saying what we've said, I think that everyone agrees on, we don't have to send that letter.
No, we don't have to send the letter. I think it's clarifying our position as the council, our, our decision is.
Scott?
It'll clarify our position in our minutes. So, yeah, you know, if you vote no, it's still in the minutes. So, I mean, it's just, that's what I think we should do.
Any thoughts, Chief?
I just think it's simple, if you don't want to respond, then don't do anything. It's as simple as it gets.
The discussion shows it, I think, Your Honor, so I don't think-
All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Or is, it should be a resolution? Should it not?
Resolution, that's-
Okay. To remain neutral, and to not respond at this point in time.
No, I think, I think the motion was to send a letter, so I think you have to say no.
Yeah, the resolution was to offer a letter of neutrality. So, all in favor of sending a letter of neutrality should vote yes. Those who oppose it would vote no.
Call for the question.
All in favor? Say aye, or no. Roll call, please.
Rachel.
No.
Fish.
No.
Arneson.
No.
Speedo.
No.
Hicks.
No.
Pepper.
No.
Shire.
No.
The resolution fails.
So, then you should ask if there's any further resolutions on the subject, or if not, move on to the next topic.
Are there any other further resolutions on the topic? Hearing none, we move on to the next item. Presentation of claims this evening, $2,618,457.14. Ask Bill Sonmore if you have any questions or concerns, otherwise, we'll have a roll call.
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Okay, second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Jim, roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. There are no board committee or departmental reports. Item L, reports from staff and administrative officers. We'll have an update on the master plan consultant, and we'll call on Amy Baldwin again.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Just a brief update of where things are at with the downtown and riverfront master planning process. If you recall, back on July 5th, the city council received a previous update on the process, and at that time, five groups had been interviewed in late June, and that was narrowed down to three firms. At that point, the city council on July 5th provided staff authorization to proceed with negotiations with those three firms. Since that point, the firms have been asked to provide additional detail on their proposed scope of work, timeline, and fee. Each of the three groups did provide that information, and members of the selection committee met again on July 27th, and reviewed those firms' additional information, and specifically looked at the personnel that would be dedicated to the project, the deliverables that they outlined, the engagement process, timeline, price, and then overall feeling and fit to Fergus Falls, based on the review of the actual scopes of work in there. Each of the firms' fees did fall within, or slightly below, the range that Gordon had previously indicated for this work, which was $200,000 to $250,000. So, the numbers came in generally where expected. And based on the recommendations of the selection committee last week, staff is going to be having a specific conversation with the preferred firm identified in that meeting, with the intent of finalizing the terms of the proposal. And the goal is to provide that final recommendation in terms at the August 10th committee meeting, with final approval of a contract by the city council on August 15th. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions on where things are at with that process.
Any questions? Then we need the Tax Increment District 4-12.
Thank you. So, before you this evening, our two resolutions related to the establishment of the proposed economic development TIF District 4-12. And if you recall, at the July 18th city council meetings, the city council authorized retaining the services of Springstead Incorporated for the purposes of preparing a tax increment financing plan related to the development of a manufacturing project on Wyron's Road. Work has begun related to the creation of that tax increment district. And as noted on the attached schedule of events that was prepared by Springstead, a first step is for the city council to pass the first resolution in being discussed tonight, which is calling for the public hearing for the approval of the TIF plan after it's drafted, as well as the establishment of the new TIF district. And that public hearing would be held on September 19th, 2016. So, that is the first action requested of the city council, is to approve that resolution, calling for the public hearing. And then the second action would be related to the establishment of an inter-fund loan with this new TIF district. And by having the authorization to establish an inter-fund loan, the city could be repaid, should there be some unexpected costs that related to this project, that the city or Port Authority would need to undertake. And this just allows us to be repaid from future increment received on the project. So, once it's constructed, so should something come up that, this, again, the city or Port Authority would have to undertake, we don't, we would pay for it now, and then be repaid over time with future increment. There aren't any costs anticipated at this point, but we have to approve this resolution now, we can't do it retroactively. So, we would just ask as a, just a procedural method or process, to have that resolution approved, including an amount up to $15,000. Should, again, costs come up that are unexpected, it allows the city to get repaid and made whole for those certain expenses related to the, the project. I'd be happy to answer questions. Since the July 18th meeting, the developer, who is our fabricators, has made the deposit of $6,500 to cover the expense related to the creation of that TIF district, and paid an $1,800 administrative fee to offset expenses the city may incur through this process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Then we need a resolution, calling for a public hearing.
I'll make that resolution, Your Honor.
All right, Anthony, second?
I'll second.
Rod? Any questions or comments on September 19th, 2016, regarding the increment, tax increment financing district? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Then we need a resolution approving the terms of an inter-fund loan for TIF District 4-4.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim, second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Justin, any questions?
Just one additional comment, we'd ask that resolution to be up to $15,000 for that inter-fund loan.
Acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
Resolutions are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Under all business, Lake Alice, we will need a resolution to grant authorization to submit an application for fiscal year 2017 Clean Water Fund Competitive Grant to construct sediment reduction features upstream of Lake Alice. And Brian Ybarro will row through it with us.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This is very similar to last August. West Ottertail Soil and Water Conservation District submitted a Clean Water Fund Competitive Grant application that was fiscal year 2016, on behalf of the city. We were unsuccessful, and I believe that information was presented in February. Since then, Interstate Engineering, our consultant with this Lake Alice Water Quality Improvement Project, has spoken to the MPCA to figure and get more information to specifically indicate how we could be a higher ranking grant. In the memo, I've included, per the MPCA, this is generally a MIDS calculation should be included in next grant. Not to get into any specific detail on what the MIDS calculation is, but it just checks various reduction capabilities of a lot of BMPs that would be, could be implemented upstream in the watershed of Lake Alice. So, that is one avenue they've, they've accomplished, and looking to submit. West Otter, West Ottertail Soil and Water Conservation District has reaffirmed that they will, for this next season, to submit another grant application on the city's behalf. So, what your recommendation is a resolution to grant authorization to submit for this fiscal year 2017 Clean Water Fund Competitive Grant, and also a resolution to enter into agreement with West Ottertail Soil and Water Conservation District, utilizing them as a submitting agency for fiscal year 2017.
Can it all be in one, or should we have separate?
Separate, probably, it would be preferred.
First resolution, who would offer that?
I'd like to offer that.
Rod, thank you, second?
Second.
Jim?
Your Honor.
A resolution to grant authorization to submit an application. Everyone understand that? Roll call, please.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Arneson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Shire.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Under new business, then, we would like to have a evaluation or commentary on street repair.
Yes, and I, I believe this is in regards to Elcott Avenue.
Yeah, it just seems like the ground will halt.
Ah, yeah, if I can, if you recall, this project was in conjunction with the county. County's a lead agency on this project for these various streets, Summit Avenue from Union to Freiburg, Cascade Street, 210, to Summit, and including Elcott. So, and we added some municipal state aid routes as well. So, it was combined into one improvement project. Currently, right now, in Elcott, based on a strategy of reconstruction, which is very similar to what's going on in North Cascade, the contractor has decided to proceed with the work, what you see on Cascade, and then reserve Elcott and North Cascade for a later date. This, however, is contingent on the railroad. Ottertail Valley Railroad is approximately about a month behind schedule. In the contract, they were proposed to be done on June 30th. They notified the county, and then myself, that it would be delayed. We came up with a few alternates, what could be done, if, if, what could be done in light of this new recent development. And we've elected that, to give Mark Sanang gravel an opportunity to come back and pave all these Elcott Avenue and North Cascade Streets soon as the railroad is completed with the crossings. Currently, right now, Northern Plains Contracting for Ottertail Valley Railroad has begun work on the railroad crossings, generally located just north of Washington. And as of today, they removed the crossing just adjacent to the library, to facilitate the work under the city contract for dills or construction. Soon as these railroad crossings are complete, Mark Sanang gravel has indicated that they plan to come back and put the final wearing course-
Right.
-on the streets.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then Rod had a concern about 512 West Stanton, and who would like to respond to that?
Well, Anthony and I have had discussions about this and taken calls, and I was out there again today. Nothing has changed in the last four to six weeks. I've talked to the neighbors, a number of them, and they've cooperated to mow the lawn at different times and do things. But the general feeling is, the person that owns the house is-
now, in Elcott, based on a strategy of reconstruction, which is very similar to what's going on in North Cascade, the contractor has decided to proceed with the work what you see on Cascade and then reserve Elcott and North Cascade for a later date. This, however, is contingent on the railroad. Otter Tail Valley Railroad is approximately about a month behind schedule. In the contract, they were proposed to be done on June 30th. They notified the county and then myself that it would be delayed. We came up with a few alternates, what could be done, if, if, what could be done in light of this new recent development. And we've elected that to give Mark Sanen gravel an opportunity to come back and pave all these Elcott Avenue and North Cascade Street soon as the railroad is completed with the crossings. Currently, right now, Northern Plains Contracting for Otter Tail Valley Railroad has begun work on the railroad crossings generally located just north of Washington. And as of today, they removed the crossing just adjacent to the library to facilitate the work under the city contract for dills or construction. Soon as these railroad crossings are complete, Mark Sanen gravel has indicated that they plan to come back and put the final wearing course on the streets.
Right.
You're welcome.
And then Rod had concern about 512 West Stanton, and who would like to respond to that?
Well, Anthony and I have had discussions about this and taken calls, and I was out there again today. Nothing has changed in the last four to six weeks. I've talked to the neighbors, a number of them, and they've cooperated to mow the lawn at different times and do things. But the general feeling is the person that owns the house is just kind of playing, kind of playing us. It's doing what they want to do. And so the house is in very bad repair, and it's open on top. It's, it's, it's a house that could become dangerous, I think. It's certainly a health hazard right now. And so I'm just recommending we fast, get this up to the top of our agenda and put it on Public Works and deal with it, most expeditious way we can, because neighbors have worked with this for five to seven years, and it's just a string along, string along, do a little bit to get in compliance and then leave it. So.
I did actually talk to April, and she said that the next move was to take them to court, because obviously the abatement notices that she's given, you know, it's a perpetual thing. You give an abatement notice, they, they mow the grass, and then obviously they let the grass mow again. And then she sends another notice and says, you know, the trees have fallen down, so they clean up the trees. And, and so I think somehow we've got to move it to another level to get the person to actually, to be fair to the neighborhood. I mean, there's a whole bunch of snow blowing equipment in the shed, which is actually wide open. And somehow we need to support April in getting it to the next level, next stage of what we have to do to get him to respond. It's an absent man, an absent owner. It's not, it's, you couldn't live in it. I don't think the basement, the basement, the foundation wall on the one side is, is going.
If I could add, just the main concern of the neighbors is that, that the owner may just, may just, you know, just despite the city, may just get it fixed up enough to be in some kind of compliance and then rent it out to a really, you know, a poor, and make a poor situation worse. And so it's not livable, as Anthony has said. And, you know, it's one of those houses that has to be dealt with more quickly now, I think. Kyle, I think you've seen that.
I was just going to ask, and I can certainly touch base with April too, just to see what we can do from an enforcement standpoint. But I know in the past, when we've had problem properties long-term, would this council be acceptable in staff at least soliciting if they would be interested in selling the dilapidated property back to the city so that the city can just take care of it once and for all? Or is that something that you're...
You have to realize too, that if you feel that the building is not habitable, that one of the options for the city is to initiate action to raise the building as well. But if you make such an action, that is a taking, that's entitled to compensation. You just don't get to come in and tear buildings down without paying someone for it. And, you know, perhaps we've done that before with other problem properties in town, is approach them and see if that's an option. But, you know, ultimately, if you're wanting to take the building down, it's going to cost something, probably some, you know, attorney fees and legal action, plus on top of that, you're looking at paying for the taking. So, you know, in some aspects, we've, we've done a successful job on addressing some properties in town along those avenues. And so I would, perhaps, you know, this is maybe one of the options that Public Works can talk about and maybe give, give staff some additional direction.
Yeah, I think there is interest by neighbors in either acquiring or, you know, fixing up that lot. So if the city took that action, I think there would be immediate neighborhood response to get it cleaned up. If, you know, we would have to take down the house. But I believe it would be very...
It just allows staff a broader flexibility.
Yes, of options, and then we can bring something back to you. We're, if you feel comfortable with that. Your Honor, if, you know, the constant, the going to court and back and forth, I